Welcome to the July 21st regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. If you can take a minute to silence your cell phone and then join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jen, can you take role, please?
Absolutely. President Roush.
Here.
Vice President McFarland is not here. Secretary Ringold here. Treasurer Lauterbach.
Here.
Member Blasey is not here. Member Craig.
Here.
And Member Horowitz is not here. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Item two is the consent agenda, 2.1, our approval of minutes from the June 16th, 2025 regular meeting. Item 2.2, recommendations for hire. The below staff as listed in your agenda packet are being recommended for hire. Item 2.3, resignations. The below staff have announced their resignations effective these dates. Item 2.4, adoption of Midland School Articles, 105, 105(c) School of Choice. Administration requests approval from the Board of Education to continue accepting non-resident School of Choice students. This applies to non-resident students in other districts within the Midland County Educational Service Agency, Bullet Creek, Coleman, and Meridian, and to non-resident students in the contiguous intermediate school districts Bay Aranac, Clare Gladwin, Grasha Isabella, and Saginaw. There will be a 30-day application period each year for students who wish to enroll in the new school year. Second semester School of Choice enrollment will be determined based on ability and is not guaranteed. Information will be made available to parents for the following school year's enrollment process. As specified by law, in situations in which special education student from a contiguous intermediate district wishes to enroll, it is required that there be a written agreement between the District of Residence and Midland Public Schools to specify the responsibility for paying for special education costs for the students. Non-resident students who enroll in Midland Public Schools through this process can maintain their attendance until they graduate and they pay no tuition. Item 2.5, financials. Approval of the payment of the school system's bills for the month of May 2025 as listed in the check registers prepared by Ms. Holderby. In the amount of $12,521,504 is recommended. The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. Item 2.6, legal payments. Approval is requested to authorize legal payments to the below list of professional legal fees, for the professional legal fees, as listed in your agenda packet. I have a motion to approve items 2.1 through 2.6.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Ringold. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approving 2.1 through 2.6, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item three, our, 3.1 is a facility improvement bond proposal update. Last month, we had spoken about taking a step back to do more comprehensive strategic planning process. Some of the feedback from the board was around what that strategic planning process would look like. Penny and her team developed, and I reviewed the request for proposal, an RFP that went out, to enroll, well, to hire external consultant for that process. Those bids are due back August 4th. I do note that this is outside of, this is more extensive than what we require for services by the district. Our board policies state that services typically fall within the administration's discretion, but because of the process involved here, what we've talked about is that those bids would be due back on August 4th. We'll look to Penny and her team to evaluate those bids and make a recommendation to the Board of Education for our August 18th meeting, where we can do the final selection of services for that strategic planning process. Remember, one of the things that we had talked about throughout this strategic planning process, and really what we want to do is make sure that we have community input around student achievement and the outcomes that we want for students first, so that we have a shared goal and vision on what that looks like for our district, and then make sure that our facilities fit around what we want for outcome for students. So really making sure that our student achievement and outcomes are front and center. One other question that I had come in from the community, well, sorry, let me pause there. Any questions about that process? One other question that I had come in from a community member about the bond proposal was just making sure that they understood our millage rate for the bond. Just wanted to circle back on this part to be precise. So, we collect winter taxes for MPS residents that do not live in the district, excuse me, not live in the city limits, and then for the city residents, we collect twice a year, so we do half and half. What we have, what Penny and I have asked FFO to do in the fall is because we collect for the go-forward basis, we collected, we approved in November, December timeframe to go out and collect winter taxes for the county at 2.95 mills, and then the city residents at half that rate for the first six months of the year. We've now approved to collect the second six months of the year for the city residents, and when we come back in late '25, we'll ask FFO to review exactly how much to charge on a go-forward basis, and be consistent with what we've said in the past around the potential to adjust our millage rate down as we collect to pay for that bond. Hope I explained that clearly, but it's specifically trying to make sure that we are being fair and accurate with our tax withholdings for our bond, while also protecting the district for any potential tax appeals that come through, and making sure that we're correctly paying down the bond debt as we go forward. Any questions on that item? That's everything that I had on 3.1. Item four is request to address the board. I do have some people that have signed up, but first on the list is Don Hinkle. Don, welcome.
Evening. I'm Don Hinkle. I live 309 Morning Meadow Way. A friend of mine has a saying that it's really hard to make a pancake so thin that it doesn't have two sides. As I talk in subsequent months about things, I realize behind the scenes, there's a whole nother side that I don't know or don't understand, so I'm really just giving my point of view. So, I've got two things to talk about tonight, and I'll try and talk fast. I'm aware that some folks in Freedom of Information Act are being charged hundreds of dollars for an agenda packet that appears to me to be essentially electronic document, and therefore could easily be put up on the public website and essentially be for free. So I'm just asking that FOIA stuff for that come to an end and it just be put up on the website for free. The second thing is that during the 1980s, Ronald Reagan, as he talked with Okeil Gorbachev, had a saying that was "Trust but verify." Well, I'm not quite there. I don't trust anything, and everything has to be verified. In other words, trust nothing, verify everything. So now, we need a Paul Harvey rest of the story. So I was an auditor for the Internal Revenue Service for 33 years. I started auditing individuals, then went to large corporations, large corporations, roughly 100 billion in assets and larger. For the last several years, I was senior team coordinator, leading a team of auditors that would audit these large corporations. In the middle of my career, I was a summary witness, that's like an expert witness for the federal government and criminal tax trials. So I tell you all this because, in reality, my trust gene is defective. Okay? Nothing about anybody here, it just doesn't work that way for me. So, as I thought about this, I said, "Well then, who do I trust?" Well, I trust my wonderful wife. And as the saying goes, "My mama raised a fat kid, not a dumb one." So I do trust my wife. So I give you this little background, so that you don't have to just stoically sit there and listen to whatever, passively listen to whatever comes out of my mouth. I give each and every one of you permission to stop me mid-sentence and say, "Don, are you going full IRS on us?" Okay? So, because I sometimes, I speak rather directly and undiplomatically, and so, please, if you say that, I'll stop, I'll apologize, we'll get a little chuckle out of it, and then we'll try and find a kinder and gentler way for me to say what I'm trying to say. So, thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, Don. Jerry Lombardo. Welcome, Jerry.
Hello. I'm Jerry Lombardo. I'm a Midland City resident. I'm the father of two boys that attend Midland Public Schools. My oldest entering ninth grade over at Midland High. My youngest will be going into fifth grade over at Plymouth. My wife is a small business owner here in town, and I am a special education teacher with the district, hired in January of 2002, worked at Northeast, Jefferson, and for the last three years over at Midland High. I am here tonight to introduce myself to you, because I am the new Midland City Education Association President. I took over in June when Mark Hackbarth retired. I also wanted to let you know that Renee Baker, our MEA Executive Director, or UNIServe Director, as we will also refer to her as, will be retiring at the end of this, at the end of this month. And our 12B Council in June interviewed some really qualified candidates and extended the invitation for this position to Mark Hackbarth, which he gladly accepted, and today was his official first day. He'll be working with Renee over the course of the next 10 days to help make it a smooth transition. So I just wanted to say hello, and I look forward to seeing you by sitting back there. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. Jerry, we don't look forward to just seeing you, but we look forward to working with you, and you and your team are an important and critical part of making this district thrive, so look forward to working with you. Thanks, Jerry. Renita Bonades.
Good evening, Renita Bonades. At previous board meetings during the bond proposal, the public was told to only believe what we found on the MPS website, and only to trust the data that MPS put out. And last board meeting, after we were told that it would feel like 3.25 this year, had we passed that bond instead of the 3.9, I noticed that you authorized to continue at the 2.95. And my understanding of the presentations and the graph that dropped off was that it was supposed to drop to 2.30 had this bond passed. That would have been this year on the taxes that you just approved. But now you're telling us, which kind of changes things tonight, that no, we're going to reassess that at the end of the year. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, when we asked last month after the meeting why it was approved at the 2.95 rate rather than the 2.3, we were told that that 2.3 was only contingent on the bond passing. So I guess when I look at the 3881 form, and I look at the numbers, and what was projected for the 2025 tax year, it showed 2.30. Those were your facts, those were your numbers, that's what was submitted to the state. But the 1.15 wasn't what was approved last month, it was 1.475 instead. And I guess I'm trying to figure out if you are allowed to bill the public more than you actually owe in bond debt this year, because it would appear, given the tax base and all that's going on, that there's almost a $2 million difference between those two things, and just trying to figure out why you would be billing more than your bond debt shows, because one of the bonds of the four paid off May 1st of 2025. So that one went away. I looked at the numbers, I see some other adjustments, but I still don't see where it's more than 2.30, given your current bond debt for 2025. So, I guess it's just another piece of data that doesn't seem to be consistent with the facts we were presented with during the campaign, that it was going to indeed drop to 2.30 instead of 2.95 in 2025. Thank you.
I'm Suzanne Reel, an MPS parent, coach, and longtime community member. Professionally, I've led large-scale, complex transformations and change journeys in both global corporations and right here in Midland, including at Dow and with many of our small businesses. I'm a transformation advisor, change leader, bridge builder, and challenge solver. At our last, the last board meeting in June, I heard board members articulate some important reflections on the proposed strategic planning RFP. For example, that we're facing big changes and change is hard, that skilled change management is needed, and that past engagement didn't reach enough with the community. Given that, I was interested in the RFP and submitting a proposal, but I noticed that the scope doesn't clearly cover the type of change leadership and momentum building that I believe is essential if we're really looking at getting to a yes by November 2026. So if that date is a goal, I feel like we're already on a very short and urgent timeline, not just to define the next funding proposal, but to build trust, align the community, and move forward together on what is essentially a 20- to 30-year multi-generational journey. Some of you are aware that I've been solutioning this challenge and considering approaches since I first engaged with Facilities Planning Initiative last fall, an approach that focuses on helping the community move forward with that clarity, unity, and ambition. From someone who has moved people, hearts, and minds into new unknown territory, I can assure you it won't be easy. We are at a crossroads, and this is an even more complex problem to solve, given the backdrop of highly uncertain times outside of our control. But I also think if any community can do it, we can. I've already been working across the stakeholder spectrum, including with some of the no-voters in the room tonight, and we've had some very constructive conversations. I truly believe there is a win-win path forward. I know all of us want to do what's right for the community now and for our future explorers. As I always say, the process of how we get there is more important than the specifics of the next bond or plan. I hope you keep the door open to new approaches and courageous, creative, challenge-solving that can help build that momentum and win the buy-in and commitment of our community. That said, I will package my ideas and share them with you before August 4th. Thank you.
Shelley Stover.
Hi, I'm Shelley Store, and I'm new coming to these meetings, but I've been in Midland for 25 years. I have board experience. I served on the Board of the Diocese of Saginaw for 11 years, six of which I was the chair or the vice chair, and I recognize that you are relying on the administration of the Midland Public Schools, and I want to inquire about how the school district met the notice requirement for the passage of the 2025-2026 budget. As I understand, the Michigan Department of Treasury Uniform Budget Manual for Local Units of Government and the relevant statute sections cited within the manual, the school district shall consider the recommended budget and hold a public hearing as required by Public Act II of 1968, among other cited applicable laws. Public hearings must be conducted consistent with the Open Meetings Act. Proper notice and the public hearing must be conducted before final passage of a budget. I believe this applies to the school district as I understand the statute and the manual. The manual notes the school district, as the governing body and responsible party, is responsible for giving notice of the budget hearing. The manual citing the Public Act of 1963 states that the local unit, and here as I understand it, the school district, shall give notice of the hearing by publication in a newspaper of general circulation within the local unit at least six days before the hearing. The notice shall include the time and place of the hearing, the place where a copy of the budget is available for inspection, and the statement printed in 11-point bold font, bold-faced type, quote, "The property tax millage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be a subject of this hearing." I was unable to locate such a notice before the meeting on June 16th. I also checked with others in the Midland community about whether they were able to locate the notice or a copy of the proposed budget. No one had. I am new to looking at these types of school documents, as I said, so I may have simply overlooked it. I only located an article published by Midland Daily News on June 16th, the day of the board meeting, which indicated that the Midland Public Schools Board Meeting on June 16th would include a public hearing of the 2025-26 budget and a time for public comment on the budget. The article did not indicate any budget specifics or expressly identify the availability of a proposed budget for review. I infer from the absence of this information from the Midland Daily News that it also did not find a notice that disclosed the availability of the proposed budget. It is possible that the required notice was published, and the proposed budget was made available for inspection, and I just missed it. If so, then I would like to know where and on what date it was published, so I can find it, but I've got asks if that's not the case. So I would like to finish, please. If it was not published, then I ask the board members to address this with the school district. Either provide an explanation about any applicable exemption that would have eliminated the notice requirement, or provide the corrective action that will be taken if there was a violation of the notice requirement. Without the public's ability to access the proposed budget before the vote on June 16th, there's no ability for meaningful public comment if there was no notice.
You can come talk to me after the board meeting if you'd like. Next up is Joey Store. Shelley, I apologize for mispronouncing your last name.
Good evening, Joey Store. I made a FOIA request for what Don had mentioned earlier, which was the agenda and the agenda packets. That was responded to kindly by District FOIA Coordinator Cynthia Marchess. At any rate, it came with, as Don mentioned, a $316 charge. And looking at the charge, it looks like it came in two pieces, one piece at a $35 per hour rate for locating and retrieving, and another piece for redacting and reviewing records at a $56 rate. I would like to ask that the fees be waived based on conditions mentioned in the Midland Public School FOIA guidelines. Basically, it says fees will not be charged for the cost to search, examine, review, and delete, separate, redact, exempt from non-exemption, exempt from non-exemption information unless failure to charge a fee would result in unreasonably high cost to the district. So I would propose that since the agendas and agenda packets are already a work product of the Midland Public School District, that there is no unreasonably high cost for finding them, the first charge set, and I think the business of redacting, surely names and addresses should be redacted, but to charge every single citizen a $56 rate for a one-time redaction event to make a public copy is overcharging us at the minimum. It's a really minimal charge, because you only have to do it once. And we also took the, a little bit of effort, looking at your list of exemplary schools, I think you provide a list as such, and we contacted eight of those school districts today about the public availability of agendas with attachments before school board meetings. I was only able to talk with someone at four of the eight school districts. All four of them made the agendas with attachments available to the public before their board meetings two to four days, Ann Arbor, Birmingham, Bloomington Hills, and Rochester. Rochester gets the gold star. Not only do they make the agenda and attachments available by publishing on their website, they send an email to all staff and parents and other community stakeholders notifying them about the meeting, but also including the agenda and the attachments. And that's your list of exemplary schools, so thank you for that. I please hope you decide to make the information available. Thank you.
Thanks, Joey. That completes everyone that signed up ahead of time. Does anybody else care to address the board?
I was talking earlier and forgot to write my name down. Joe Bonades, Homer Township. As you have heard, there's a controversy over the continuation of the full 2.95 tax millage for 2025. Going back to the bond campaign, the Michigan Association of School Boards published an update which included, quote, "The district should only provide factual information about the issue without opinions or conjecture. The factual information is not required to be balanced, and there is no requirement for the district to present facts supporting an opposing view," unquote. There is circumstantial evidence that the news update was specifically written to defend the Midland campaign. Why am I bothering you with this in the public? There was no information available that the 2.3 millage was contingent on the bond passing. The pre-existing bond debt was reported to the state as 2.3 for 2025, and your literature presentations leveraged that drop to make the 3.9 millage feel like 3.25. Thus, the public had no reason to doubt that the presumed facts of the 2015 millage in 2025 were conditional. I have tried to follow up with getting underlying information, but there are holes. As MASB said, and we have now seen demonstrated, you only need to present facts that support your position. What are the consequences of these events? One, transparency has dissolved into that which you want to show us. Two, we can assume nothing and will have to formally ask probing questions to get a clearer picture. Three, we will ask for formal statements on what you will do if given the money, as well as detailed reportings as how you use the money. I will send you examples from your bond elite comparison schools, which was different from your education comparison groups, to illustrate how others do that. Your consent agenda, number four, adoption of school's choice. I'm aware there was a school choice program, et cetera. This is the first time I've seen the policy written out, and I'm concerned about the last sentence. "Non-resident students who enroll in the Midland Public Schools through this process can maintain their attendance until they graduate and you pay no tuition." That sounds like a guarantee. I would say that can be a nice-to-have, but if situations change and residents need places in our schools, they take precedence. So I would like to know that is not a guarantee. And thanks to our current political situation going on in Washington, DEI has been, quote, told to go away, unquote. told to go away, unquote. The state board is trying to resist the federal edicts. A few cities have declared that they will not stop DEI. Midland still has a DEI director. For the record, if the district loses any federal funds because you stay on the DEI train, I will formally request that a portion of that decrease comes out of the administration's salaries. Thank you.
Anybody else cares to address the board? Wishes to address the board? Thank you. Item number five is admin services. 5.1 are the study committee meeting notes from July 9th, 2025. Myself, Brad Blasey, and Anne Horowitz met with Penny Miller Nelson, guest present Sarah Dooley. Meetings started at 8:00 AM. We did a policy update review. The committee reviewed the recommended policy updates included in the June 11th, 2025 Trune Policy Update, as well as district recommended updates to policies 4225 and 5409. The policy updates will be taken to the board for action at the July 21st, 2025 meeting. Meeting adjourned at 9:00 AM. Item 5.2 for action are the June 11th, 2025 Trune Policy Updates. Penny?
Good evening. Yes, we have, as you just mentioned, the summer policy update from Trune. It is a series of policy updates, as you could see in your board packet. Most of them fairly standard based on legal updates. I do want to draw your attention to policy 5409, which is academic credits. It pertains to our graduation requirements. We have updated that policy to include that a new graduation requirement, starting with the class of 2028, will be completion of the FAFSA. This is the application that students fill out to receive financial aid. There is a push across our state to ensure that students complete the FAFSA so that they have maximum opportunity for post-secondary training, not just colleges and universities, but other institutions that offer financial aid. I want to be clear that we are not intending for this to be a barrier for students. There is a parent waiver that will readily be accepted, and the district can also designate for a student to be exempt from that requirement if we've made a good faith attempt to try to get the student to fill out the FAFSA. So I want you to hear from me that that will not be a barrier to graduation for students. What will be a benefit is the additional career counseling that students will have access to, helping them clarify what their career path can be, and selecting courses here at Midland Public Schools. We already do that, but enhancing it so that students are on a track for a success plan, an educational development plan.
Thanks. I get a motion for item 5.2.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Craig. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approving the recommended changes in item 5.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six is finance facilities and operations. Note that there was no July meeting, so no minutes. Item 6.1 for action, custodial supplies. Anna?
Bids were solicited and tabulation was provided for custodial supplies for the 2025-26 school year. Administration recommends issuing a purchase order for paper towels and toilet paper to supply Den of Auburn Hills, Michigan for $42,420.20. Operating funds will be utilized for this purchase.
Thanks, Anna. I have a motion for item 6.1.
Move the adoption of item 6.1 to issue a purchase order to supply Den in the amount of $42,420.20.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Ringgold. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approving item 6.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6.2 for action, food service equipment. Anna?
Bids were solicited for various food service equipment items to be utilized throughout the district. A complete list of the equipment was attached to the agenda. Administration recommends issuing a purchase order to the low bidder, Douglas Equipment of Ionia, Michigan, for $345,942.91. Food service funds will be utilized.
Thanks, Anna. I have a motion for item 6.2.
Move to approve food service equipment purchase from Douglas Equipment in Ionia for $345,942.91.
Support. Motion by Ringgold, support by Lauterbach. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approving item 6.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.3, playground mulch. Anna?
Bids were solicited and a tabulation was provided for mulch for the Adams Playground. Please note that this is the first playground that we are changing the surface covering for in order to be in compliance with recommendations for playground surfaces. We anticipate needing to replace the surfaces at all elementary playgrounds, and due to the anticipated expense, we had previously included this in our bond plans. However, this is something that we will need to continue with regardless. Administration recommends issuing a purchase order to Superior Ground Cover Inc. of Grand Rapids, Michigan, for $36,738. Operating funds will be utilized for this purchase.
Thanks, Anna. I have a motion for item 6.3.
Move the adoption of item 6.3, awarding the purchase order to Superior Ground Cover in the amount of $36,738.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Craig. And then, Anna, just a quick question. You've talked to us a little bit about some of the new safety recommendations that this helps us start to comply with. Does the 36,738 do all of Adams School, or is it just a portion?
This will do all of Adams.
Okay. But then obviously varying size and scope across our other buildings throughout the district.
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion?
So is there already a set plan for the progression of elementary schools? Is it just kind of based on, like, current status? Or, yes, Brian's nodding, maybe, or alphabetical? I don't know, like, they just will?
It's a matter of looking at need and going through at that point.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. We have motion by Lauterbach, support by Craig, 6.3. All in favor of approving item 6.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.4 for action, gifts totaling $28,074.38. Anna?
We have two items tonight totaling $28,074.38 that will require your acceptance on behalf of the board this evening. These items are a donation from an anonymous donor from Midland High Hockey in the amount of $23,074.38, and a donation from Colin Buell to the district for at-risk students in the amount of $5,000. We would request that you approve accepting these gifts this evening.
Thanks, Anna. Do I have a motion for item 6.4?
Move to accept the gifts totaling $28,074.38.
Support.
Motion by Ringgold, support by Craig. Any further discussion on 6.4? All in favor of approving item 6.4, gifts totaling $28,074.38, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you to those sponsors. Item 6.5 for information, gifts totaling $5,447.31.
The total amount of gifts listed for information only tonight is $5,447.31. These gifts this evening represent support for programs ranging from support for the National Honor Society at both high schools, robotics at Jefferson, a donation in memory of Mary Lou Angelotti for the Alps Program, and more. As is tradition, all donors are going to be recognized in the credits of this evening's broadcast and also through board correspondence upon your behalf. We are grateful for our community's support of our students and our programs.
Thanks, Anna. Item seven, human resources. I don't believe we met since the last board meeting, correct? Item 7.1 for information, staff retirements. Kara?
The below staff member announced her retirement effective August 28th, 2025. Dawn Smith, a paraprofessional at Woodcrest Elementary.
Thanks, Kara. And then item 7.2 for information as well. Kara?
The board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the following families. Thomas Lowry, who passed away on June 16th, 2025. Thomas began his career with MPS in 1971, teaching fourth, fifth, and sixth grade at Chestnut Hill Elementary until 2003, when he transferred to Jefferson Middle School to teach sixth grade. Thomas retired in 2004 with 33 years of service, returning as a substitute teacher from 2006 until 2009. We also extend our deepest sympathy to Esther Frost, who passed away on July 1st, 2025. Esther began her career in 1967 as a substitute teacher before becoming the librarian at Longview Elementary in 1970. Esther then served as the librarian media specialist at East Lawn Elementary until her retirement after 20 years of service in 1987. We also extend our deepest sympathy to Barbara Edison's family, who passed away on July 10th, 2025. Barbara was employed with MPS for 20 years of service as a paraprofessional at Parkdale Elementary.
Thanks, Kara. Item 8.1 are letters from the Board of Education to the following individuals or organizations as listed in the agenda packet. Item nine are scheduled activities for information. All regular and special meetings of the Board of Education begin at 7:00 PM at the MPS Administration Center unless otherwise noted, and the scheduled regular meetings are listed in the agenda packet. Item number 10 is the study session discussion. Are there any points of clarification or questions from board members? Just one item to note from the public discussions around the public hearing. I did look in the Midland Daily News. The public notice was published on June 9th of 2025 for the hearing to take place in this location on June 16th, 2025. So if you have any other questions, happy to answer those ones. And then obviously some other questions to follow up on. But with that being, and where I found that, just so you know, is Midland Daily News. If you click on the three dashes in the top left corner, go down to public hearings, or public notices, excuse me, and then you can search. I just typed in Midland Public Schools budget and it popped up for that notice. Are there any other questions or comments from board members? If not, I'll turn it over to Penny now, and then we have a closed session, and then we will come back out of closed session.
Yeah, the next time we're together will be August 18th, which is the day before we welcome students back. So I just want to remind the board that a lot happens between now and then. And we've had great learning sessions happening all summer long with teachers coming in voluntarily to learn about Google, the Google Suite, and how they can improve their practice with that, or learning how to use other technology tools, working on curriculum alignment, and just a variety of sessions this summer, including our MPS Resiliency Rise Refresh Sessions for admin and teachers. I share that because I think it's important as board members for you to know that the learning never stops for the adults in our system, and we continually work to do better and be better for our students. And then, of course, you'll be getting, if you haven't already, formal invitations to our new teacher orientation. We're really proud of the way that we welcome our new team members. And there is a series of three days. The last two are back-to-back days, which will be the 6th of August, I believe, and you're welcome to come join us for lunch and mingle with our new teachers. And we will also send you an invitation to our opening staff session on August 12th. More to come on that. I'm all set, Phil.
Great. Thanks, Penny. So for the public's awareness, we have two items to go into closed session for that I'll ask for somebody to make a motion. The first is our superintendent's mid-year review and goal review. Recently, the legislator in Michigan changed the formal reporting requirements for check. They have now added a requirement that we have to do a mid-year check-in with the superintendent. We will go into closed session, as has been requested by the superintendent, do her mid-year review and goal review as part of the merit compensation that we structured into Penny's contract. We will come out of closed session to approve that formal feedback for Penny, and then those will be published on our website following the meeting. And then second is the strategy and negotiation connected with the collective bargaining agreement for our MASESA affiliated group, who does both trades and grounds. So we will go into, we will also take that into consideration during closed session and then take action on that contract after a closed session, after we've had a chance to discuss it and look to the board as to whether or not they approve that. So can I have a motion for a closed session?
Move that we move into closed session for superintendent mid-year review and goal review as permitted under MCL 15.268, Section 81A, while in closed session, also discussing strategy and negotiation connected with collective bargaining agreement as permitted under MCL 15.268, Section 81C.
Motion by Ringgold. Support. Support by Lauterbach, and this does require a roll call vote.
All right, President Roush.
Yes.
Secretary Ringold is a yes. Treasurer Lauterbach?
Yes.
And Member Craig?
Yes.
Thanks. Now move into closed session. So we're back in open session after the closed session to do two things. One was the mid-year review and goal review for our superintendent, and then the second was to review the tentative agreement with the MASESA collective bargaining agreement. So item number 12 for action are the superintendent's mid-year review and goal progress. I will offer a couple words. So again, as required by updated law, the Board of Education needs to do a mid-year progress report with the superintendent, which occurs in the middle of the calendar year. And then we also, as part of Penny's contract, need to review the merit portion of her contract and approve and review those goals, and then set goals for the 25-26 school year. The mid-year progress report, which will be published online, looked at at two goal prior, or priority areas. One being student learning and achievement, which is based on student growth and assessment data and instructional leadership. I'll just read the board notes. Penny has focused on multi-tiered system of supports, or MTSS, as we call it, to catch early warnings so that the Disher can intervene earlier on with parent-child cooperation mentality. The board noted that MPS should continue to collaborate with other districts and seek exploration of ways to improve literacy through intervention and supports. This has been borne out in the budget and prioritized throughout the district. MPS could consider additional parent communication and involvement on what literacy at home looks like and how parents and teachers can work together to best assist their learners. Second was a goal around communication and parent-family connections. Board notes state continued improvement over the past year. Penny and the communications team are finding the new voice of MPS and connecting with parents and students. Penny is starting to work on a strategic communications plan that will be part of the 25-26 school year goals. As part of this communication plan, Penny and team will co-develop a parent and family engagement strategic plan that encourages and expands this critical partnership. So with that, the board feels that Penny is on track and has offered up a couple words of encouragement to continue to evolve the district along in this journey, as well as in Penny and her role as the superintendent. So can I get a motion to approve the mid-year review?
I move that we approve the mid-year review as outlined by Phil.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach and support by Ringgold. Any further discussion or comments from other board members? All in favor of approving the mid-year review, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. As part of the mid-year review process, the district goals, or, excuse me, the superintendent goals were also reviewed. So we had the 24-25 superintendent goals that we had published as part of Penny's contract. These goals are to be paid out before the end of the calendar year, so before December 31 of 2025. The first goal around student growth and achievement, we are waiting on the state to release the embargoed student test data. So we will come back, and likely in September, I think, we'll get that data so that we can review the merit pay associated with Goal 1. Goal 2 was around the facility plan and bond. There were three parts to Goal Number 2. Facility plan document and board-approved ballot proposal for the election, the facility bond information campaign, and then finally successful bond approval by the community. Board comments were Penny Porterheart into this bond, working tirelessly, and achieved Goal 2A and 2B. And then, finally, Goal Number 3 was around visibility and engagement, as well as communications and media relations. Board comments were nothing short of excellent in this area. Great improvement over the past year, and board has approved full payout for Goals 3A, B, and C. Then, I guess I should get separate motions for each of these. Can I have a motion to approve the goals reviewed as part of the 24-25 school year, noting that we still have outstanding data to review for the student achievement data?
Motion to approve student, or superintendent goal review for the 24-25 school year for Goals 2 and 3, and associated compensation for 2A, 2B, and 3A, 3B, and 3C.
Support. Motion by Ringgold, support by Lauterbach. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor of approving 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, 3C, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. And then, the third part of the mid-year review, where the 25-26 draft, well, they were draft, we're about to make them finalized, the 25-26 merit goals. I'll note, and again, these will be published on our website, Goal 1, again, is consistent with Goal 1 from last year around student achievement, noting the new baseline updated from the most recent data. Goal 2, we've updated for what we talked about tonight, which is the district's strategic planning process, and then subsequent updated district facility plan. And then, Goal 3, again, has three parts, but they are around visibility and engagement for 1, communications and media relations for Goal 3B, and then 3C around the summative evaluation. Can I get a motion to approve the 25-26 goals?
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Ringgold. Any further discussion on the 25-26 goals? All in favor of approving the 25-26 merit goals, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13 for action, consideration of the Midland City Educational Support Personnel, or Macepsa, contract ratification.
Move to approve the Midland City Educational Support Personnel contract.
As. Support.
Motion by Ringgold, support by Craig. Any further discussion or questions? Thank you to the team that worked through that negotiation collaboratively on both sides. I think it's definitely a fair contract that'll make sure that the district has skilled trades, skilled trades and grounds employees that we need for the district. All in favor of approving item 13, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Item 14, adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by Ringgold. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion adjourned, or, meeting adjourned.